Good evening, welcome to the school board meeting. It's Monday, March 22, 6:00. 9:00 is the border, and 18:00 is the seventh building. I'll be in the room.
This is Fisher.
Yeah.
Mr. Gaynor.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scaram.
Here.
Mr. Rakowski.
Yes.
And Mr. Reed. That's what we're doing now is.
Do it for him. We will continue. This meeting is the newest first statute.
Robert Smith.
So we're ready to go to the today's presentations.
Good evening. Brian, Justin, Chris, Laura, and Tiffy Sullivanry. Brought a couple of guests with me tonight, Pastor and Mrs. England. Going to talk a little bit about the partnership that we have. Church. Slide four things really that I'd like to be on. One, just introduction. Two is. To the pre-Christmas church, how did our partnership? And we had a planning meeting to kind of look at how this partnership really could benefit both parties. And we just started our programming. Lunch program, a way to talk a little bit about pastorship. His experiences as far as lunch program. And just a little bit of next steps of where we can see this partnership. Quick introduction piece. You know, we really see Sugar Creek Lutheran Church as our current. As the father says, if there is a partnership. And Sugar Creek Lutheran was one of the first groups pastor specifically through each hours last spring. When schools closed. And really his message was what can we do? Everything from helping with food to. They care was a big one that they offered with wifi for our kids that didn't have the wifi. Could come to the church they'd offered. Just specifically the facilities, equipment, whatever we need. And when I mentioned that, I really talked about. Graduation, how we were going to do graduation. So they're doing the drive-through, driving church services. They have that equipment. Really was whatever, whatever they could. So it was just kind of a great introduction for us. So being the person. And Pastor called me and said that their, their board had a. A meeting about really partnering with. But Tiffet's was kind of in the background. The idea was almost like an adoptive school. Again, what needs you? At a driving committee, both of church members as well as school employees. Getting together and talking about how can the church support our staff, our families, our kids. So out of that. What I was hearing from everyone is let's not wait. So one of those instant programs that we thought we need to help our kids right away. We identified some students that would really benefit from just having some one-on-one interaction. Whether that be conversations or playing a game with them. They're just kids that kind of stay out of like, you know, they, they're always looking for a little bit more. So once, you know, we got the okay in regards to vaccination program. Pastor and his group brought in four volunteers. Individuals you probably would recognize specifically, you know, Miss Lyons who taught in the district. For a long, long time. We split up our lunch period into two half-hour sessions. And that allowed that group to, to visit and really interact with two groups of six students. It's obviously so small. See some of those pictures. So that, that group has been coming every Wednesday since we've been to start. They're going to finish up this week. But it's been a fantastic program for, for our kids. That group of, of students, they asked me every week as I was like. Our buddies coming to them. You know, and I'll let Pastor talk a little bit about, you know, their side of that as well. So I'm going to take over. Pastor, on your experience and maybe anything that I might have left out.
Oh, you didn't leave anything out. For us, it's been really easy. It was easy, number one, to choose Tiffet's for us. And it was also easy then to talk to Brian and get that going. We really lost, with COVID, we lost a year of service for our congregation. We lost a year of service. So we wanted to get that back. We, our congregation has always been very involved in the school district and school with the schools. And so we, how can we help families, how can we help? Our, our other guiding force is that we think that if we can support teachers. That's the best thing we can do to support kids' families. So how we can support teachers first. How then, as they support students, how should they support families? So they would be guide yours on what they, on what we did. And the last one, I had a great time. I had Jonathan and Pro and that one picture, Jonathan and I are playing goldfish. And so we're not going to let any of them go over the top. But it's just a very good relational building thing. The other piece by us being in the, in the school and the community, you know. Principal Frost, they would say, hey, we got this need. And so there's some, I went to my endowment, there was a need for some travel stuff. I went to our endowment that they can support some travel stuff for some parents. And they were eager to do that. So the more that we're involved, the more we're successful. And what we're going to do. Our hope, so we're going to help out with Tiffet's Palooza. Mr. Davy has, he is using it us for. He doesn't need the help because he's got so much help for field day. He said we need supplies. So we're going to get supplies. So it's that kind of everyday stuff. Our hope is next year that we have enough people ready to do more. Collaborate more with the community.
So Pastor kind of stole my thunder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wasn't that smart.
You should have talked.
It's like. We called each other. But it does, you know, exemplify that we are certainly in this. As a partnership and we mentioned Tiffet's explosive building is still oncoming before the year is out. But looking at, you know, what, what kind of needs our, our building and our community has on Tiffet's. That they can help with. And mentioning the world of churches and, you know, possibility of that being a hub here at Tiffet's. I think would be something that would get used rather. Church. And then just, you know, those classrooms kind of moving beyond the adoptive school and have individuals who are responsible for each classroom. It's been, it's been a great start on the floor to.
Just thank you very much for coming with some creative ideas and how to still provide that service to me better.
My pleasure.
All right, so back. Thank you very much. So it's kind of interesting over the last years that I've been pretty excited that every time I've come this year. I've been able to talk about stuff that's not COVID-related, which is kind of cool. Tonight is, this one is a little bit COVID-related as we look for permission. In the, I'm sure you get to that with, maybe we're not the first one, but as things are starting to open up. And we're looking at the FFAE programming at both the local and state level is starting to make plans for some of these events. Is that there are three potential events that ideally would work better within overnight stay. So I don't know where it's board, where you guys have, you have conversations about the overnight stay concept at this point. But there are three events that we are looking at doing. So one of them is our chapter officer training retreats. It's actually a little bit earlier than we would normally do it, but we're also trying to stay a little bit closer. So we're looking at using the Woodville Dale camp location, which for the housing will allow us to keep students spaced out a little bit better at nighttime, those types of items. Wisconsin FFAE has plans to move forward with their state of faith convention. It's been moved back three weeks. It's not been the first week in July. They've been working with the Alliance Energy Center and Dane Cowie and the health officials. And right now the plan is that they'll be offering most of a normal convention experience with some virtual stuff for that first week of July, July 2nd through the 8th. And then the third one is one of the student contests is associated with the Wisconsin Prom Technology Days, which is always changes location each year. And this year it is in Oakley County, which is great. And there's some neat opportunities there. But the contest that we are looking at participating in. Registration and all this stuff is between 8:00 and 8:30 a.m. And if you do the math, we really, we really don't think getting our students up at 3:30 in the morning will make them most competitive. So, so we are looking at doing is that we're going out the day before. And since we're close to the Repalls campus, we have then had a college tour, I think Repalls in sort of project culture. And so it's kind of doing overnight. So we have a much shorter drive to that competition. So again, I don't know where is the board. You guys are on that process. State FFAE Association, they're working with Alliance Energy Center to obviously take necessary protocol, safety protocols. Dane Cowie is going to be relaxing a lot of their protocol. And that information we've developed June 2nd. So as much as any else, there's a lot of change in dynamics, things that could. I guess tonight we come to you, maybe we're not the first ones to ask, but I guess we're all to throw that out there. I guess looking for your potential person to explore those overnight experiences, obviously kind of on any kind of COVID health situations.
I think with the numbers moving down, I think it's a good time to speak. We have the person that has. Keep rolling the eyes, look yourself in the eye.
Yeah, I would recommend approval. I would like to run through with Mary Trotty, our district nurse. We have, you know, if the, the students and the vaccines are available, the students now for vaccine, I could see no need at all. But to be, I would be a little more comfortable if those who weren't vaccinated. We have the rapid tests that are sitting around. Administered, that was just to check it in. They don't have to. Not that it completely eliminates having to worry about it, but it does give. Gives us another layer as a scholarship that we pointed to, we said, yeah, we need this effort to that protection.
Yeah.
And we have about 45,000. Or events like this. But I would want to run that by you. But I think when we've worked with the county health department and have things like the prom where. We have to be dancing for us together over the eighth grade, moving on. Just that added layer helps county health officials more. Make them do.
I'm in motion. We have a big conference. Please invert with this weather silence. I suppose, thank you.
Sure.
Sure.
Always an interesting hour.
Let's see in August whether it's.
All right. Let's get a ticket so we can fly.
I might be able to pray for you this way. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to. All right, yep. Based off of the recommendations and repeat that from the last meeting, the student success time. Expletions been added in the handbook as well as how linked to the high, the hyperlink to the high school courses that are offered. Are included and they separated the middle school and high school paragraphs and calculated student break session reflection. Are there any portions that we want to review or any other discussion that we have in the handbook?
I'm going to approve the 2021, 22, A12 student handbook as presented.
So we can second to approve the 2021, 22, A12 student handbook as presented.
Aha.
Minutes, regular session of this year, agenda, handout code session. I will approve minutes of May 10, 2021. Third cycle. So we can second to approve the minutes of May 10, 2021, regular close sessions, schoolwork.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scaram.
Yes.
Mr. Rakowski.
Yes.
Unbuilds, disturbance. The general unbuilds is leaving check number 142960 to 143106. Wire numbers 046 to 050. ACH check numbers 418, 435. Option renovation wire numbers 044 to 045 and 051. Envoyed checks number 140995, 141812, 142947. And combined amount of 500, 8,900, 38,800. And there's a memo providing some additional information on several of the codes. Back it, make copy of.
Mr. Fisher.
I'm going to approve the general and other unbuilds of May 24, 2021. Check numbers 142960 to 143106. Wire numbers 046 to 050. ACH check numbers 418 to 435. Options renovation wire numbers 044 to 045 and 051. Envoyed check numbers 140995, 141812, and 142947. And combined amount of 500, 8,900, 38,800. And 49 cents as presented.
Sir, sir. So I move to second to approve the general unbuilds of May 24, 2021. Check number 142960 to 143106. Wire number 046 to 050. ACH numbers 418 to 435. Option renovation wire number 044 to 045 and 051. Envoyed check numbers 140995, 141812, 142947. Combined amount of 500, 8,900, 38,800.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scaram.
Yes.
Mr. Rakowski.
Yes.
Important discussion on student report.
So all our student reports are carried. At the high school, the service school information has been sent out. It will be taking place from June 14 to July 2nd. And then the second session was in place from July 12 to July 3rd. Student classes are over and we all prepare for graduation. The month of May is Elkhorn Month and May 31st is Elkhorn Day. Friday was Bike to Work Day and many staff members departed. We had our, our cookout on Friday morning and they all brought up on their bikes. At the middle school, they were named an Abbott National Demonstration School for their exemplary models of the Abbott movement system. The PTO held a quick trip call-off fundraiser. And sixth grade students received over 180 chew boxes from Wayne Papamorio in order to do their solar project. At Jackson, May 26th is the Jackson PTA's Young Annual Lock Club. First graders spread kindness through traffic rules on the sidewalk. Fundraising for a student with cardiac heart transplant has been continued. And the most recent fundraiser is students can page and slip into a charity for what moved the outfit and his serious family will wear to the lock. At Westside, their graders were able to hear a story on the square in downtown and also the surprise parade. June 4th will be a book signing and the movie with, and a movie with Papa Puddy to celebrate another successful school year. Each Thursday, students will wear a green to support positive mental health. And then finally at Tiffet's, students were able to head outside for music class this past Friday. Fourth graders received a special presentation from math science in Milwaukee when they learned about gases, sublimation, and the power of fire. Then finally, Lewis Woods Rocking Center visited that school on May 7th to teach students how to operate. Oh, I think so, yeah. The seniors show was the same day as our graduation, yeah. They go, cool, okay.
We're planning on taking them to the schools, just having them like endorse senior walk-through.
Okay, okay.
Walk through.
I just wanted to make sure that there were so many gift cards.
Yeah, so the seniors last year. Now do the honors. And now in school, seniors show.
Right, it was downtown, yeah.
But yeah, we're, we're back at it. We do have gifts for our student representative. Toby will have some of his. And Sage, thank you very much. It's, you both were extremely busy and it's hopefully rewarding time out of your schedules. We appreciate that.
Uh, just send me. It's down there. It's like, um, yeah, there you go.
That one is from.
We go from.
Yeah. So the last time I was here, oh, it's from this. The last time I was here, it was a status update. And it was, uh. Same here, you all know. It was a shelf change year. And so tonight, we're going to talk about. Okay, one more time. That's on the horizon. So some items of interest to discuss this evening. And four, without sunshine. Increasing our enrollment, focusing on mental health, options in academy, and maximizing our space, our newly rented space. So enrollment is always an interesting topic for us. It's very fluid. And this year has been like no other in terms of new enrollments, inter-district transfers, just kind of all over the place. So in projecting next year, it's kind of a moving target, but just looking at open enrollment first. 2019, 20, the non-COVID year, I call it. Forty-five during the regular open enrollment period, students open enrollment into options. Then the next line here, the TAM, is the alternative open enrollment, which starts after July 1st, so July 1st. If they miss the regular open enrollment period, July 1st they can apply for alternative. And that's typically, you can see, usually double what we get in regular open enrollment for the year.
Which means a great because they haven't come back in a month, so they get all the specials.
Right, right. It's just, it's crazy. So, wait, can you go back? So 2021 being, you know, our COVID year with outrageous numbers. Our regular open enrollment period was still pretty similar to the year before, but had, you know, about 50 more students throughout the year. But that doesn't really account for the ins and outs, happens a lot. This coming year, coming in for next year, we have 46 that have applied for enrollment for options and a fire.
Sorry, I just got a request to share your screen. So the people at home can see your presentation. You want me to go back? You showed it.
Okay, so looking at 2021, next year for open enrollment, we have 46 coming, which is right on average. So, you know, I'm pretty happy with that number. If we're predicting the alternative open enrollment, I would say we're somewhere between 2019 and 2021. So I'm going to say 125. So now you go to the next slide where look at this, don't look at it crazy. It's not a formula. It's just a graph. But if you're looking at our current enrollment, our current enrollment is on the left-hand side. There were 511, that's not including SOCs out of our. We know from surveys that we've sent to families that were received back that the 889 going back in building. Or in-person instruction and 111 on decided. But I want to note that at the 4K5 level, where they're 19. And it's, and they pretty much have decided, you know, they're returning to their home district. They are going back to credit school, moving out of state. So they're, that 19, I can tell you are, they have decided that the middle school and high school, there's still a need to get some surveys back. We have eight and four pairs coming in. And then you can see the new open enrollment that I mentioned on the previous screen and what I projected for our. So conservatively, because this doesn't include inter-district transfers that will come back next year. Or students from Williams Bay that would be part of our consortium, that doesn't include those. So conservatively, I can, I can say we'll probably be around 500-ish next year, which I think is really great. We ended the year in 2020 with 200 students. So we're really very lucky to be coming home. We're also sending out a mailer in June. This is what will be sent out to Walworth County, Dane County, Rock County. St. Penosia, Racine County.
This will southern part of the state. To household age range.
11 to 17. Some little words. Right, I just raised.
Well, you shouldn't.
Right, okay, right. I just talked to our mailman today about the.
Yeah, so you, yeah, you can really drill down on what demographics you want. Well, we chose 11 to 17 because we found these would be more students that aren't going to have the regular face-to-face contact. We've found that to be more successful with the middle school.
Our elementary age students that come into options typically work it out and it's going to be more goal-oriented. That's just the backside of it. So another item of focus for next year is mental health. It's continuing on for the great work that was done this past year. But we can tell you that we have applied for a school-based mental health grant. And we're very hopeful to receive that grant. If we do, it would be $75,000 per year for two years. Through data that we received back from surveys from DESA and SHAPE. We know that we need to grant a multi-tier system of support, mental health, to do some stack development. And to deepen our community resource connections and develop those tiered activities for adverse students. If we receive the grant, well, that money would go towards a mental health navigator. That would help us achieve those goals that we have. And another item that will take place is attending a conference through CASA that helps to develop those goals as well. And I think we would hope to get some caution out of that due to. attending a conference through CASA that helps to develop those goals as well, and I think we would hope to get some caution out of that due to some. Uh, I mentioned before in our last presentation that mental health is, um, I mean, all schools are struggling right now, but we've noticed that in our virtual school, we have a lot of students that are coming into us in crisis and to support them in every way we can. Sometimes just not going to school is not, does not fix it, the things that are going on, so we really want to take the whole of students involved there. Uh, options academy, this is really exciting for us next year. Uh, if you wanted to go to the next slide, Jason, academy is one of our three elementary models of instruction. So we have book-based, for four K five, and also six eight. Uh, we can't talk about book-based, but we don't recommend it for new families joining us, we recommend our online for that. So book-based, and then we have our online program, and then academy. And this, it's a hybrid approach where they attend three days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, next year. So they'll have in-person instruction with our teachers for all subjects. They'll have two instructional days that are teacher-directed but at home, and that work comes back on Monday, so, um, then you can go to the next slide, Jason. We privately did this in two thousand nineteen, and that was based on needs from families that we were gonna lose about thirty-five students to. Parents need to go back to work, uh, a lot of variety of reasons, uh, they wanted, they needed, they wanted more support with, uh, for instruction, parents did. So they were gonna put them back full-time, and they were out of districts. We, we created this out of the need for students and families. Uh, we had thirty-five students our first year, which is two thousand nineteen, that was a COVID, our COVID stopped short a little bit, but we're seeing great success. And families love it, we've grown to about four, five, I think, around here. Um, so we go to the next slide. Uh, right now we have seventy students that go in, came by the academy next year, so, families are really excited about it, and so are we. Something that we didn't do this past year because of the move in and out of our other building, we just didn't, we wanted to do adjustments, and so. Uh, we have a great curriculum that we use, it's called NIFL, it lends itself very well to a blended approach, has a great at-home, online component. And we're, we're just, we're very, we're very excited about that, and our families are. Uh, the last thing I'll talk about is maximizing our space. There's just a little peak at our hallway, it was great to get our artwork put up there. Uh, it's a, options is a busy place, so this is just a snapshot of what happens during the week. Here are options, we're, because we're four K twelve, we tend to, elementary's doing programming, high school's doing part, you know, so we're, we're already, you know, scheduling times and rooms, and we're, we're needing some additional space. Uh, we set, we have separate entrances, so the way the building is designed, it does lend itself to add upon a couple more classrooms of, of new entrances. So it will really alleviate some of the, the scheduling conflicts that we're having right now. Go to the next slide, and I just put a link in here so that if you haven't seen some of the pictures of inside the building, I feel like you probably have, but, we'd also like to invite you to come over anytime at lunch here. That's right.
I did too, I was, I was.
My husband, because he went to school there, so that's why I wanna give him a little bit. Probably next year. It was, it was great, great open house. Uh, so that's just a summary of what we talked about tonight, and any questions?
I don't know how you keep so many different programs going.
I'll tell you, uh, the team at options, who the teachers and the staff that have worked there are just absolutely outmatched.
Yeah.
An idea basically to.
Uh, you seem a little scary, but I think we have over five hundred students. Again, we're, we're just, we're providing so many different ways, receiving education in this district, that I'll be talking to someone else. You're very interested, we're probably, I'm sure a lot of people are watching this. And, and the academy action, there are other schools in this area that offer that, that pre-day.
You could get your school and add it to the comp camp.
Oh, that's a great idea.
It's not in there, it's.
Oh. Are they making you go through districts?
Uh, some applications, I guess, and then the other ones, um.
You're trying to top it, so they can't put more.
There's a code, yeah, yeah, I go, I'll bring, yeah.
Actually, I'm very, yeah, I just want that here.
Doesn't exist, yeah.
Doesn't exist, it doesn't exist.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't come out of the studio.
It's have to say.
Yeah, yeah, that's tricky, yeah.
Yes. Who hops up and then graduating class, I see, I'm like, oh my god, what is that?
Absolutely.
You don't think for that, but yeah.
I know graduating classes.
We don't really. It's holiday. No, I'm sure we can get that number.
Yeah, I.
Just count how, just count how many of these you assigned.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it was pretty serious.
Yes.
All right, uh, we had the, you know, communication that went out to all the families right now, knock on wood. We have zero positive cases in the school leadership, and you quarantine most. So I did receive lots of feedback from the protocol change. None of them requested it to be read at board meeting for public comment. Um, you know, at first I received lots of positive feedback, and then I probably received five or six communications of people that were really disappointed. I don't understand it, so transition for them, so we had some good conversations, I think overall, um, people are in a good spot. We did do some accommodations, you know, if people weren't comfortable, just like, you know, we had some families who they didn't ever want to wear the face covering, so we let, you know, we have online other options available for you to go remotely if you prefer, um, and vice versa, we did, you know, we let, you know, family to know that we do have that in there. To make, finish up the year remotely. Um, and before making that decision, we did coordinate and touch base with the health department and run the plan by them, and, um, so, yeah. Looking, what I, you know, it's, it's looking good so far, we overall received a lot of. Any of the other Walworth County schools? No, um.
Just.
Not, not paying aware of.
Yes, so we talked about that, and only one other school, we're going to go to, uh, other than everybody seeing that.
Yeah. I think that's what the, the rest of the Walworth County schools, both Williams Bay had one more board meeting tonight, so I'll have to touch base with. All the others didn't. So they were kind of, uh, they were in a position where, they, to be frank, their boards wouldn't be placed in a position to be pressured to get anywhere.
I guarantee you there would.
They'd have to tell her.
Oh, I'm sure.
I, I'm guaranteed, I know of us.
So. Yeah, so I have to touch base with the day, but I, I think they'll probably, everyone will fall asleep starting this summer. When I say around the, the high schools, some of the elementarys are in those small PD elementarys. Let's see, any questions related to COVID? We do plan to still do the eighth grade moving on party, and I have a couple or two related to the fact that we're requiring the, the rapid testing on that, but I just feel with the fact that we're doing close activity, we're all on the dance, we have the tests available that it's, that precaution that's necessary. And, um, they have over a hundred and fifty to sign up for that, which is a good trend.
Parents have to prove it's up here, it's our.
Right.
Right.
There were some that were saying, well, the numbers are so low because nobody wants to test. I think we thought they were low just because of the minister, just because they don't want to sign up. All right, any other questions COVID-related? Um, all right. Hello, what's your question?
I think it's worth learning more about the federal, um, COVID relief funds. That would be a good opportunity to share it more, a little bit about what we know, what we're gonna get for fun, how it's been in its, in its early stage. So this is all a mirror of what was titled the elementary and secondary school convergence fund. And they came through in a series of what's called S R one, S R two, and S R three, and kind of click through those cases, and you, you get a sense of the dollars that were distributed to the states, and you can see the amounts increase each, uh, operation. First to operation, President Trump, and the last one under President Biden. Um, and the length of time is extended for each one of those two, from one to twenty-three, four. Kind of a sense of the dollars coming through the state of Wisconsin, so how are they then distributed? And if you kind of click on the, the next slide, uh, you'll see where most of the funds are allocated through what's called the Title One Fund. Poverty, uh, and the movie, the school district, so, um, you know, for some school districts in the state, they don't, they're not eligible to title one the fund, and most of them are distributed that way. Ten percent can be distributed based on statements, either through the EPI recommendations, the governor's office, or legislative branch, which falls to the strong finance committee. And there seems to be a lot of discussion of that, and maybe some frustration that, that most of the funds they don't have control with in terms of the allocation. So they're looking at that ten percent, and much of the discussion with that is distributing those funds to, and control to those schools that are really facing this destruction. You're gonna kind of see that a little bit, so.
And that, that poverty rate is off of, I think it's important to note, it's off the census data, not pre-reduced life share.
Okay.
So for example, youth bill, the reason we're building a house in Whitewater is based off of the census data, because they have some full college students, that's the low-income area within Walworth County. So there's school districts that may not have that great a poverty rate from the student population, but may receive a lot of federal dollars. Because it's been something, since the, not, since it's not that that's really here or there, but I, I just, it is what it is, that's how they.
So that's the distribution, um, so how can we use this one? Um, and there's a number of different avenues for it. Generally, Title One and IDA allocations we get now, which are part of our entitlements, we can use some other votes off prices. The other examples is ensuring health and safety, the school. Developing implementing plans, including staffing for the continuation of construction. And assessing and addressing learning loss and safety, reopening schools. And generally speaking, there's some resources available, the EPI has grants, when you click on this link, you're gonna see a whole list of avenues that kind of fall into a little more detail, but it gives you a sense of those. I might look through and read that, but I wanted to share that with you, to give a sense of, um, different offerings and issues under these S A dollars. Of course, there's some requirements, um, and some strings attached typically with federal dollars, um, were required to develop and make public plan on the safe return to in-person instruction, which was backed, was done back in August, two twenty-one. So, um, comply with these federal requirements, uh, EGR, which stands for Education Department, um, general administration requirements. The agency that oversees these dollars, and then state statutes, and LEA represents local education, education, so it means, in our sense. And then there's, there's different federal regulations for construction projects, and you have the minimum wage requirements, that's what that act calls for. And then generally, um, I think there's another, uh, camp that references what's called pay some pepper. And, and generally, that means that this, that you're continually providing the safe resources to the programs of the global level, and those federal dollars in addition. Um, so the states require to maintain that, we're not necessarily under that requirement. Um, S R two has a twenty percent to address learning loss, and then one more, and then it has to be reasonable and necessary.
So the state can't come in and say, hey, school districts are receiving almost two billion dollars, or over two billion dollars, everything combined, so we're not going to provide as much.
Oh, got it, right.
They have to keep at least the minimum, the same.
They have to keep your same level, not our end building, so that's the string kind of piece attached with federal dollars. Uh, but there, there is some flexibility too, and the first one here is significant, uh, if we can click on that. Supply out, um, versus supplement restrictions, uh, really does not apply, what does that mean? Typically, when you get a federal grant or federal entitlement, it wants you to add to your program. In other words, if you're getting a million dollars, you need to add a million dollars to the program, you can't take it from your program, reduce it by a million, and then substitute it back for that. That's generally, and that's kind of ingrained in all of the administrators, quite honestly, because that's how we operate with federal funds. So when you get those, you're always thinking, okay, it has to be, gonna be supplementing with these dollars and that supply. These dollars we can, and it's a full reversal in terms of how we, you know, uh, this is significant, so. Wide range of upper X uses, and then ex, you know, the extension to two thousand twenty. Oh, no. So what are we looking at, you know, and what are we gonna see for dollars? Where S R one, you know, we've already received, already spent two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, right, your school, right?
Spent that by July fifteenth.
Uh, S R two, we know we're gonna get at least nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, plus an amount to be determined, and that's that ten percent that's. It's not, it's, it's hours and structure. There's a hundred and seventy-two schools in the state that will get the, the, or potentially eligible for about sixty-five million dollars in student history. We don't know what we're getting, we don't know what all the other schools have in the construction.
Is that districts or schools?
Uh, that is districts, hundreds of that, so.
When they're looking at these things, so are they looking at what actual students, and that number as opposed to like we have some that's in the options somewhere.
We're looking at actual physical things, the things instruction within a classroom would be, would probably.
So they maybe look for them, the students that work.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So we have to figure an energy of membership, so it's a lot of the forty-one, we have the conclusion of the school year. Um, my guess is we don't know the answer to that question until September, October.
Should.
This is gonna take that long to find out.
We, we should be in very good shape because we were face-to-face, not in a hybrid, actually, yeah, except for those six days around.
Yeah.
I, I was on a school visit to Jamesville Park last week, and they're still on a hybrid.
Couple of my colleagues who does some calculations, and you look at income schools, most of them have this, if they're out of equation, right? And it's like, there's S and S out there, but in reality, it's either, other than, definitely there's some division of value. And then S R three is the larger chunk, and that's lower two million dollars. Uh, also, there's some additional IDA funds, and that's sixty-five million dollars. We add the known figures together. So what are we looking at in terms of using the dollars? Well, COVID response, there are sure safe return schools, about seven hundred thousand, so we've already spent about seven hundred thousand. Um, summer school, uh, is an eligible expense, one of the things we're looking at, using that kind of as an offset, same offset, to employ our summer school, we can do that. Then use what we put for summer school for other COVID. So part of it, that is. Part of it's looking at additional staffing, special ed and instructional staff. And we created then, we also have basically just a budget balance. We don't know what the state budget was at. And we can go forward in that prior to some, some avenues to a little bit funding. We have created a planning document and it might be worthwhile, in case if you just click on that. And I'm not going to go into a lot of the details, but we started to create kind of a list of, here's some planning ideas. Some of them might be directly planning for these dollars, or some of them might be used for offset. Such as oil replacement classes, the additional options for what's necessary. So those are some of the offsets that we're considering. And then on the bottom, I know you can't see it probably because it's a tab, it's hidden. We started to create then how we're using those dollars. So if you click on like S R one, it'll show you how we've spent those dollars. And then if you click on S R two, it shows you how we've spent some of the S R two and then how we're looking at the remaining. Then if you click on S R three, this kind of gives you a sense of just starting to look at that. The DPIs recommend, they can kind of standard series, finish one, then run it to, and then run it to three. So it's a little bit of a jigsaw really, kind of putting it together. But it's a very unique opportunity to have that. To plan and ability for it to, which kind of helps with the structure of that decision. Couple of important considerations. There were one time funds, so when they're gone, they're gone. We have some time, so we don't have to necessarily spend it and do something right away. We've got 2024. You know, funding ideas should be clearly allowable or otherwise considered the offset. That's kind of the information I'm looking at because of other school resources are. There's something that seems to be not necessarily eligible expense. For example, I don't know if the oil replacement class I agree with the definition. Probably definitely looks at second play. So that could be, will be summer school and then that is an offset. Transparency on their uses is important. And then kind of stole us out of the DPI document. But the amount of federal stimulus funding we can provide is unprecedented and will be subject of a greater than usual amongst scrutiny of the whole model for private classes. I always have any of these moments. So I think the transparency is going to be very important. I think right now with the state budget process, they're certainly looking at these dollars and trying to figure out what the big dollars, how much state support. There's some requirements and things at your level.
I was just thinking the same thing.
I don't know, a couple of years after this. I, I do think that it'll get scrutinized and the same districts do this all throughout the state if they increase their fund balance substantially during this timeframe. That'll lead to our local state leaders saying, say, you guys don't even need this money anyways. All you do is supply it, they're operating costs and where your fund balances. Um, because they tend to, they study that portion of the school budgets.
And if there's some concern that districts haven't done anything, oh, God, what are you doing?
Yeah, but who knows, other districts don't know what's going on.
Anyway, I hope this is helpful and they don't kind of abuse me, but it's.
We have a number of personnel changes this week. Uh, we have the resignation of Katie Reader, who has accepted a position of the Jeffersons for the district. She's been with us six years. When she was that group that we hired for, three, four, almost a year.
Seven years.
Seven years. This is her seventh.
She started when I did.
Time flies. Alright, then we have the, we wish her well and thank her for her service. Tom Satares, who served as the custodian of Jackson, we want to thank him for his service. We want to thank Kevin Wallace, Daniel Birch, and Brittany Lamb, who all served as assistant coaches for us in wrestling and volleyball respectively. We have a transfer of Jennifer Laner, who will be moving from her middle school special, special education program over to Westside to add up a program that we're, we're naming Rise, which will serve our students with autism. Who are kind of in that in-between, you know, wait a minute, transitioning into the classroom providing supports there. She's very excited about that opportunity and says it's her dream job, something that she really had a long time desire to do. Melissa Sanchez will be shifting our fifth grade enrollment next year at Westside is a little lower. We're going to shift her over to a reading specialist position. And that will allow her to provide some of that catch up and greater servicing for students over at Westside. Tracy Weiss has been appointed as a Tivit Special Education Teacher. She's been working as a teacher assistant for us. And then Veronica Johnson has been selected to serve as a Westside Special Education Teacher, filling the position that was vacated by Kathy Greck. Want to congratulate both of them. And Veronica has been a fantastic sub and a fill-in for us this year. She actually applied for our HR position last time around. I told, I asked her afterwards, I said, Veronica, do you have a thought of a teacher? She just gave off that vibe, it was kind of that enthusiasm. So it's exciting to see her, she had it, she shipped it and worked on that and yeah. So it's exciting to see her in that position now. Aaron, I, I'm always going to, because in New Glarus, I told Aaron this, in New Glarus, they go by Swifel. But it's Swifel, yes. And, but Swifels are from a Pecatonic, you better stay hairy too. It's Aaron Swifel is joining us from Badger Middle School as a technology education teacher. He'll be replacing Todd Heritage. What's that? He wanted to pursue a different opportunity. So Aaron is working in almost an identical position in middle school, it's freshly certified. Does, their structure is very similar to ours. Now, did you know Aaron's up on the phone? And then Taylor Teske was support or was selected as the district human resource specialist. She'll be replacing Shannon Sweeney, will join us on June 21st.
She works for M R A. For companies across the nation. She works out of the locker shop office. Human resource generalist, gather from.
Is it HR for issue?
I'm looking for the personal representation sheet, remain informed, fully qualified, reporting the employment contracts, efficient broadcasting, background check, and just recommend the correct screening.
Oh, no, and on that HR position, we had a fantastic.
Oh, good.
Yeah, great group. Uh, I do not have any gifts this evening, Sharon. I think the board notes.
Oh, the board notes.
But we missed the options we had. Alright. Yeah, I missed that one, the board notes. So we wanted to share with you the, the project we've gone through and the board already approved a project addition for options. And the overall project itself in standalone is staying pretty well within that, that framework, but not included in that original budget piece was the original drainage plan that we had with the project. We're just not terribly happy with how it's not draining. It's, there's a ditch that goes back behind the, the building, the culvert. And the water's kind of sitting there, there's not enough of a slope, so to speak. And there's not really anywhere for it to go. And so what's being recommended by our architects and their engineer consultant is that we really should do a, to do a long-term solution to solve that in the back. And in doing so, that would include, at least right now, they haven't finalized the formal plan. But right now, they would include in putting in sewer piping and drains and then running it over to, Brad Davis, not here, we'll have to let him know later. Into a drainage pond, at the three farm. Well, we told them with the timing, well, we can't, we're in a plant crops issue, we'll have to. But we, we haven't seen any designs yet, but that's their recommendation to do. The sewer piping, the drainage over there, they don't have the pricing on it yet, but they said that to run just the piping over there. You know, we, we have some allowance in the project for that, but they said it was $50 a linear foot. And you were talking, what was it, about 500 feet is what they figured to get it to the pond. And then they had to come up with, well, what's the pond cost, which is really pushing the dirt around. But for some reason, that's not seen something, but it's not checked. So they're estimating that, you know, could be up around that, just to push the dirt around, put pond up down there and so on. So we're looking at about another 150 to 170 thousand. And so we thought it would be good to bring it back to the board. We do have, obviously, this is a case where we'd be able to do fund balance reviews. Obviously, S R funds wouldn't, this wouldn't fit like the, but it would be one of those covering the cost of something else to generate funds to this project. Or for drive and fund that, and the drive utilizing that instead of, or something on the resilience. But we would be outside of the parameters of what was approved for that addition, because this is kind of a new separate issue.
Because of this issue, because it's ever been talked about in the past, I would solve this issue for.
They found in the, was it the original plans? From way back when, that they had a plan to run this strange one all the way to that very back corner with the woods. Right back.
It's always been smoky everywhere. It's oak wood. It's always been a problem to come that side of town.
Even the long run, even if we weren't looking at. I'll be able to sense the. Interference. I would be a level where water.
There's a reason there was water in that basement.
Oh, and our patching didn't stop the water.
And this is a dry year too, I mean, you know, it's 2017. So maybe take care with, we're going to extinct here, infrastructure will be.
And there's lots of space back there that if, that this year they're applying any, is it soybeans in that area, was that right? So the following year, there, there should still be plenty of space to ship next year that garden a little further down. And or even if we need, if we wanted to take out some of the woods or a different type of crossing. This makes, because of the slopes, it's really the path of these resistance.
Is C G Smith going to take edits on this?
Okay, needs to be designed first, but probably work for the architect.
And pass go through the super council probably as well.
I think we talked with the architect, they're, they're having the city require kind of. Up and we're in.
So it may take a lot of new processes.
I think the way that it was not moving forward yet, when you said we have those numbers, you know, canceling the place, but get it definitive.
Yeah, I don't think you have enough money. I think it's for more or fewer of them. Even though the cost of the area of that support. I don't deal with.
It's possible.
Money, money can be kind of, that's good, but I'd like to know if the kind of, if the full ride hard, $500 a month, if they have got 22 to eight years or four years.
You might be right, Ed, I mean, it's 40 grand a stack, so maybe for a house.
Uh huh.
Oh, no, we can do it, but I, I'd like to.
I, I think the question on the table for tonight was, are we still okay moving forward with the, of the, the team? We didn't want to delay the addition. And we want to do, but we wanted to price the board that we do have this drainage piece that we'd like to come back and address. But we didn't want to table or delay that addition with the construction costs.
We have, we have the drainage issue, whether or not we have. We really completed the addition and then get all the numbers and. Obviously, we need to.
And C G should put together a construction timetable and working with, with Eric Keough in terms of the plan design, saving all of the, the connection, right? That's another part of this. So once that happens and the documents. They're thinking, sorry, Paul. And have that similar schedule. And we asked them about the process and this and this. How they.
Yes, but if they don't have the plans finalized, how can we, how can I be positive to build retention base when I don't know the size? I don't know the slopes, I don't know the grades of the pipe. You know, they're estimating the size, sizing the diameter pipe, I mean, all that stuff. It makes a lot of difference.
No, but we need.
No, yes, but that's why we're not asking for approval of this drainage plan. We'll bring back that when we have the formal plan. Cost, it was just getting the blessing, we already passed the motion to do the addition. Is the board in light of this, knowing that we have this potential liability out there? More than likely what that's the recommendation, we still have to.
On the far side, we have to do it.
I, I was just going to say, whether we do the addition or not, we still have that out there.
Well, we are, we are authorizing, we're paying our, authorizing, following up.
We're just acknowledging that we know that this is going to be.
There will be some engineering costs.
So there's, yeah, there's actually no motion needed for that. Um, I did not have any further comments related to the policies for the second reading. Three forty-five point one-one, a thirty rule, a thirty exhibit for the English language programming. Are there any of those that you would like to review before, you know, come out?
Second.
To move consequently to approve the vice policy, three point, not one, the class rank, allowing system, a thirty rule. Most everything used to district facilities, a thirty exhibit, you see district facilities, facility used to be scheduled in the policy, English language programming.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. Raval?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Mr. Rukowski? We're seeking the approval of the wage salary adjustments that were discussed in post-session. This is determined by the school board on the main tab.
Moving to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two salary adjustments for supervisors, office support staff, and administrators.
I'll second.
So, moving to second, to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two wage salary adjustments for supervisors, office support staff, and administrators.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart? Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. Raval?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Mr. Rukowski?
Yes.
Right, we need to set up a policy committee meeting to discuss proposed changes to the gender support plan of the school district. Want to know if, in checking with school board members, wanted to see if June twenty-first at twelve-thirty would work for the committee. Would I do Tuesday the twenty-second at one o'clock? Would you prefer that?
I might feel a little bit more worried. I don't have a good excuse for being here.
An overhead flight's a pretty good.
Yeah, and while you can still.
Yes. All right. And the last announcement is Mr. Frost, Anastasia stole my thunder. The middle school team, and this is a big celebration, it's a preparation process that takes probably hundreds of hours of time to go through. It's a very rigorous process, a thorough process that involves climate, the culture, the instruction, the pedagogy, everything related to good instructional practice. In order to be identified as a demonstration school, the middle school accomplished that this year. The high school is on track to next year. One of the components is you have to, there needs to be a certain number of students in the Avid elective, which the high school does have for next year. So, they'll go through this same process next year, but to give you some context, we're only the seventh school of the entire state of Wisconsin. That's not district, just the seventh school period, to be recognized and been given that Avid demonstration school distinction. And of all the Avid schools in the country, which there's thousands of them, less than one percent of the Avid schools ever reached the end designation as an administration school. So, it was a lot of work. I know the middle school, they're very excited and part of their efforts, and I really want to thank all of them for their work, and their dedication to get to that point, the teachers, the administrative team, and congratulate Sarah Bosch as well, as she really experienced a lot of, puts a big accomplishment. Well, Sarah, is she on?
Yep, I'm on.
How long, how long before you have to get re-certified or re-presented?
It's every three years after this. Did you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Anything you wanted to add to that, Sarah?
No, you did a good job.
All right. Thank you, that's it. I would like to know, Phil Howard, if he met. Has everybody received, have you seen kind of the schedule for graduation and so forth? Okay, we'll make it, Julie, if we could push out, email to the board, that's just what they have scheduled for graduation.
Are we doing a practice?
Yes, so there's a practice on the day of graduation. And the awards night will be virtual, that'll be broadcast Wednesday night, so, I believe. So, I know there's a recording going on, but you can just click on YouTube when it's available. They will be, they will have, it's listed as a practice for seniors, but really, it's, they're just walking through to get their cords. We'll film that, and then they'll put it together in the video presentation on.
Yeah, practice is Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday morning for the awards night practice, and they'll do the awards Wednesday night. Thursday night is the graduation, at seven o'clock, it's open seating. Yes, so we'll, we'll just, they'll coordinate, let you know, and we'll make sure there's a safety infield there. We did not, we think there's enough seating for everyone, it's outdoors, and so, safe without, so we took off the limit. And originally, we were going to look at putting seats on the infield going back, but decided not to do that with the new guidance, because we didn't want a bunch of, we want, what was, part of what was nice about the graduation outside was we had more control over the infield, to that area where the students were running, people running back and forth to the graduation. So, the senior stroll will still take place on the graduation day at noon. So, I'll make sure we email out that schedule, so you can attend. They're all invited together, I'll send them a letter in. Rain date is Friday. I was going to look at the fourteen-day forecast. But the day wasn't up yet, I haven't looked. Everybody loved it outdoors last year, but that's because we had gorgeous weather, so. If it's raining and stormy or hot humid, people are going to be saying, you know, who's the idiot if they want to.